This January 3rd at 7:03. I'll call the meeting to order. The first order of business is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. I see Pastor Paul here, and please remain standing for the pledge preceding the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. You might know that Dick Powell was a member of my congregation, and I asked him on Sunday morning, did it feel strange to you not to be at a council meeting? Three weeks ago was his first one he was not present. He said, "Matt, I didn't know what to do." And I said, "Well, that is why God created Monday Night Football." I'm not sure I'm gonna watch Monday Night Football tonight. I watched the first quarter of the game last night. Councilman Edwards, you know what it's like to be someplace putting your very life on the line. I think tonight we need to remember our first responders and people in our armed forces and all of those who placed their lives on the line for us. I'm gonna pray this prayer that was written 13 years ago by a pastor named Billy Graham, and it is still as relevant to us today as it was then. Pray with me, please. Our Father and our God, as we stand at the beginning of this new year, we confess our need of Your presence and Your guidance as we face the future. We each have our hopes and expectations for the year that is ahead of us, but You alone know what it holds for us, and only You can give us the strength and the wisdom we will need to meet its challenges. So help us to humbly put our hands into Your hand and to trust You and seek Your will for our lives during this coming year. In the midst of life's uncertainties and the days ahead, assure us of the certainty of Your unchanging love. In the midst of life's inevitable disappointments and heartaches, help us to turn to You for the stability and comfort we need. In the midst of life's temptations and the pull of our stubborn self-will, help us not to lose our way, but to have the courage to do what is right in Your sight regardless of the cost. And in the midst of our daily preoccupations and pursuits, open our eyes to the sorrows and injustices of our hurting world, and help us to respond with compassion and sacrifice to those who are friendless and in need. May our constant prayer be that of the ancient psalmist, "Teach me, O Lord, to follow Your decrees, and then I will keep them to the end." We pray for our city, our nation, and its leaders during divided times, and for all those who are seeking to bring peace and justice to our dangerous and troubled world. We pray especially for Your protection and all those who serve in our armed forces and first responders, and we give, we thank you for their commitment to defend our freedoms and our safety even at the cost of their own lives. Be with their families also and assure them of Your love and concern for them. Bring our divided nation together and give us a greater vision of what you would have us to be. Your word reminds us that blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. So as we look back over this past year, we thank you for your goodness to us far beyond what we have deserved. May we never presume on Your past goodness or forget all Your mercies to us, but may they instead lead us to repentance and to a new commitment to make You the foundation and center of our lives this year. And so, our Father, we thank You for the promise and hope of this new year, and we look forward to it with expectancy and faith. This I ask in the name of our Lord and Savior, who by His death and resurrection has given us both hope for this world and the world to come. Amen.
Please throw me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Mr. Lavender. All right, let the roll call show that all council members are present.
So noted.
We have the minutes, item C.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the City Council regular minutes from December 19th, the Judicial Selection Committee minutes of December 8, 2022, and also to consider accepting the Community Services Advisory Board minutes of October 27, 2022.
Second.
All right, a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next item is item D, claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated December 14 through 27, 2022, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to approve the claims. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, claims are approved. Next is our item E, which is our meeting agenda approval. Does anybody have anything you wanna pull off the consent? Or, actually, just need approval for the agenda. I do wanna pull one item off of the consent agenda, and that is item G8. Put it first on the agenda. Anybody else have anything, any changes to the tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So both. Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved as presented with the one noted change. We have no special presentations, so next we'll move to our consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda, which I just did. So is there anything else? Anybody else wanna remove it in the public?
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda with the exception of G8.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. That's the, tonight's, all of tonight's agenda, right there. All right, next is our public comments, which is item H.
G8.
Oh, G8. Sorry. I'm the one who pulled it off, and we gotta deal with it. All right, G8 is consider the final approval of ordinance number 3322 dot 1, and it's an amendment of number 3322, which we previously approved. So Larry, or, okay. All right.
Honorable Mayor and Council, good evening. Happy New Year to all of you. This is, we're asking for, to increase the expenditure of the payment to Gallagher and Kennedy that you guys passed late last year. That was for $400,000. That was for the attorney's fees to pay for Gallagher and Kennedy to represent us in our CON hearing. The CON hearing took place in June. Originally, it was scheduled to be eight straight days. We and the city manager and myself discussed it, and we spoke with Kevin O'Malley, who's the attorney that's handling our case, and it was expected to be an eight-day hearing. On the eighth day, literally at 10 minutes till 5, Mr. Rains and myself were sitting there, and the intervenor, the person who intervened in our case, stated they needed more time now to have additional witnesses, and they wanted two more days of the hearing, which was kind of a surprise to all of us. That was the first we had heard of it. Obviously, at that point, that throws a little bit of a wrench in the budgeting. Mr. O'Malley had budgeted for an eight-day hearing, and that's what we had authorized. The hearing, the problem, the other problem that existed was the eight-day hearing had taken place over eight days straight, which was nice. The ninth day took place in September. The 10th day took place at the end of October. We currently have an outstanding bill with them for the work that they did on those two days. Right now, the case as it stands, on January 15th, the written arguments will be submitted to the court, and then the intervenor has 90 days from that to respond to the closing arguments put forth by our council. So that's where it stands at this point. We spoke with Mr. O'Malley again, the two days of court and the written arguments and the different back and forth and all that. He's estimating could be 150 to 160, so we're asking for an additional $200,000 be authorized, hopefully so we don't have to come back again. That's the gist of the request. I can answer any questions that you might have. So it was about $50,000 a day. I guess they charge more for the two or day, two days? I wouldn't characterize it as $50,000 a day because there was a lot of preliminary work, dozens and dozens of hours to prepare documents and stuff for it. They also had to do requests for documents from different agencies. They had to interview and speak to all the witnesses, including Mr. Rains and myself, and I think we probably had 10 or 12 witnesses over the period of time, so they have to interview all them and get all that. There's a lot of preliminary work besides the court days. It's not just them going to court. There's a lot of other work that they do as well.
Okay.
In the office.
Anybody else have any questions or comments on it? Okay. All right, thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
All right, then I'll entertain an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3322 point 1, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending ordinance number 3322 to increase the authorized spending limit for services rendered by Gallagher and Kennedy, P.A., to represent the Casa Grande Fire Department relating to an application of a certificate of necessity, authorizing the amended expenditure of public funds, and authorizing the execution of any documents by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approval of ordinance number 3322 point 1 as presented.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
I just wanna say, I just hope that for $650,000, we get this through, so, through the, get our CNN.
Yes, sir. It would just be 600,000, though.
Okay.
Total. I agree with you, though. We hope so, too. We're hopeful. We felt pretty good about it, and Mr. Rains testified for an entire day, and so did I. We felt pretty good about it afterwards, but you don't, you just don't know.
That's right. We're in the middle of vote. That was just my comment, sorry. I prompted his comment.
You still need to vote.
Yes. All right, you got your money. All right, so let's move to the public hearing, public comments, sorry. Public comments, which is item H. I do have one here that someone has submitted, so I'll call on Kurt Bauer first, and as you please come forward if you'll state your name and your address, even though I have it here, but for recordings. And then Kurt, please keep your comments to three minutes, and remember, this is not an agendized item, so we can't officially comment on it, and, but we can certainly make comment after the public comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. I was here last month discussing public play at Dave White Park, pickleball play. We had a meeting with Mr. Weaver and Mr. Galeros following, and we thought we made a little progress, and the Parks Department decision was to limit even further public play at Dave White Park. There is 26 hours of city permitted play. The public's allowed two hours a week. We felt that was unfair. The city assigned us courts to play publicly with heavy restrictions of four people can only play for one hour with permission with the city. We're not allowed to intermingle with other players. We are subject to the code of conduct, which we accept, and we're judged by the group on our behavior, which is wrong. We're given the worst courts, even though it's empty courts. Most of the time, the city is using five courts. They stick us on the back courts where we have to disturb other players to get to those courts. So we're at a bad spot every time we show up. I have not shown up. My group that I show up with starts at 11:30. My group's too big to accommodate me, but it's the public that are being denied those courts. Most people come in with six to 12 people, which is 12 or three courts. They're not allowed to play there, even though there's three courts assigned to the public. You're only allowed one hour. You're only allowed four players, and again, the restrictions. We've asked before to have the public play on those empty courts. There's no reason to deny public courts. The city group complains about noise. Well, this is pickleball. Any other sport is loud. They complain that players are stolen. I'm not quite sure what that means. You know, you play with the better group you wanna play with. If that's what they're complaining about, that's, that's what they're talking about then. We just ask that the public have that privilege of playing. The city's a very welcoming area, but not on the pickleball courts, where we're restricted to limited play, and we just wish they would reopen it for everyone. My last couple of seconds, this is my last month on the Community Service Advisory Board. I wanna thank the city for giving me that time. Time's up.
Well, thank you, Kurt. Thanks for your service.
Can I distribute this? This is the survey the city's done?
Sure.
Okay. Who should I give it to?
All right, is there anyone else who would like to? Go ahead. Take your name and address for us, please.
Tom Lilly, 2054 North Thornton Road, space 109. I live across the street from the pickleball courts. I'm not quite sure why we're trying to do what we're doing down there for the city with those open courts. To me, at 11, after 11:30, the courts are open to play, you know, and there's no, nobody has to sign anything, nobody, they just come and play. And it's been that way in the mornings, too, until they started locking them up, and there's been no problem with them just coming to play. I'm not quite sure why. But now what's happened is they've decided, well, we're gonna make it to where you can play from 10:30 to 11:30 on Tuesday and Thursday, and if you have four people sign up, you can only play for that one hour, and if there's other people, you can't switch courts. Well, pickleball is a social thing. We might have eight players, and now we can only play on the, four of you on one court and four on the other, can't cross over? That seems ridiculous. And then you have to sign a thing that you're not gonna be belligerent and everything, and I don't see any of that anyhow. I'm not sure what we're trying to prove here. I guess my, everyone I've talked to, and which I, you know, I was involved in setting up the pickleball league a long time ago with, with Brian here, but anyhow, we have, you know, hundreds of people that are playing there that are no problem, and we've not had a problem for a long time. And in those mornings, you know, it's a matter of somebody comes down there and plays on the court. At 11:30, it's the same thing. When people come down, we just all play on the same courts. You know, if somebody wants to play, we bring them in. You know, I'm not sure why we have to say, well, you have to sign up for an hour, because at nine o'clock, when the, the city portion starts, if they got it from 9 to 11:30, all the courts, and there's eight of them that are open that aren't being used, and after they start at 9, it really should be open to the public, the open ones that are not being used. They have paddles in, which are using those courts. You just stick a paddle in and you start, or they have a round robin once you start at 9 o'clock, and the round robin, you can't get into the round robin anyhow because you have a list of everybody that's playing, so if somebody comes late, they can't use it anyhow. So all the courts that aren't being used are chained up. In my view, it should just be, let it go. Just say if they're, and then you have a couple of people from the city that are down there that are checking to see if you belong to the city club people. Why don't you just let them, you know, let everybody play, and if there's an argument, they have to go to those two people sitting there and saying, because they're not gonna get anybody, because there is no arguments, but if there was, they could handle it and they could kick you off or whatever you need to do. It seems ridiculous that we're trying to make something bigger than what it is. In my view, just cure the problem and open the courts up. You know, just leave it open. Come 9 o'clock, everybody get off the courts, the, the city people group get on the courts, what's left over, now say, okay, those are open, let people play. You know, I don't understand why we have to say, start at 10:30 when they're starting at 9, so now you've lost from 9 to 10:30, and, you know, it just, it's, you know, everyone I've asked is, why are we doing this? We've always been able to just pray in the morning, play in the morning, and have no trouble. Now we're locking them up, you know, so I, I think, I told the city, the rec person to just keep them locked, don't try to, you know, it's better to lock them up than to do what you're doing right now, because it just makes, aggravates people because they can't go on the courts, so.
Thank you. Anyone else here? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Brian Shipman. I live at Robeson Ranch in Eloy, and this is about pickleball, too. It's a little bit different. I am the vice president and director of Arizona Pickleball Players League. This is a nonprofit Arizona corporation with a 501(c)(7) designation, and I'm here to give a brief report about our league. This week, we started our fourth year playing at Dave White Park. The reason that we're a 501(c)(7), it's, it's a league designation, it's a nonprofit, it's federally recognized as tax exempt, and we do this throughout Arizona. This is the Casa Grande region that I'm responsible for. We have regions in the West Valley, the East Valley, which is Phoenix, Tempe, Mesa, and in the Southern section. We have enjoyed a reput-, well, you know, a relationship with the rec department for four years, and it's working out really well. Let me tell you just a little bit. We have 440 players that play three days a week at Dave White Park, and our hours of operation are from noon to 4 on Monday and Tuesday, and noon to 6 on Wednesday. Of the 404 participants, 78 of those participants are from Dave White Park area, Mission Royale, Palm Creek, and Robeson communities. The other 22% come from Maricopa or Florence, and we're happy to have them in to play in the league. I think it demonstrates the fact that the league is working well with the recreation department to bring pickleball to the town, and the other thing is, we recognize that the recreation department does have public programs, so our programming is outside of theirs. As I said before, we start at noon, and we go to 4 or 6, three days a week, when there is no public play. Kids are in school, the parents are working, most of our players are 55-plus. We also pay rent, you know, we have an agreement, and we pay rent, and we're timely about it. What I wanted to say is, we're happy to use Dave White. I believe that the rec department is happy to have us there, and we certainly want you to know what we're doing. So, thank you very much for the presentation, and if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If not, I have a information sheet I could leave with somebody.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here tonight who would like to address council? Judge O'Neill.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I come forward just as a citizen to say thank you. I think you get criticized a lot. I think you get hit a lot. You know, I was born behind Little Sombrero a long, long time ago, and one of the things I've always loved about this community that I've always called my home is this place, you people, down through all these pictures. You've always backed the kids. Thanks for backing mine. Chris wouldn't be on that Court of Appeals, but for this council investing and saying, we believe in you. Thank you.
Congratulations to Chris, by the way.
We're ten here.
All right, anyone else here tonight? All right, seeing no, no one else, then I'll close the public comments, and we'll move to item I and I1.
Thank you, Mayor. Lieutenant Palmer's gonna present, and as he's coming up to get ready, I would like to say that this isn't a kind of an anomaly for us to ask for the transfer of a budget authority from a future fiscal year to a current one, and I believe after the presentation and the reasoning that you hear from Lieutenant Palmer, you want to understand why we come before you tonight with this request.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Staff recommends that you authorize a transfer of budget authority for the upcoming fiscal 20, fiscal year '24 budget cycle, and grant budget authority in fiscal year '23 for staff to execute contracts and issue purchase orders for seven model year 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe police pursuit vehicles, and enter into agreements and issue purchase orders as necessary for the purchase, outfit, and equipping of these vehicles. The total amount for which spending authority is being requested under this action is $658,435.78. $305,963 for the seven Tahos, and the remaining $352,472.78 to outfit and equip them. Although these vehicles were not requested for or funded during this fiscal year, sufficient budget authority exists within the capital projects line items to accommodate the purchase. Vehicles are often hard to find nowadays, and these vehicles are sitting physically on the lot at Courtesy Chevrolet. They're actually holding them for us in hopes that this is approved. The funding comes from both current and historical development impact fees, public safety police funds 412 and 419, which are dedicated for new capital purchases for the department. Purchase of these vehicles in fiscal year '23 would also decrease the amount of capital expenditures requested by the department in fiscal year '24. And with that, I can entertain any questions you might have.
Is that a promise? That you're not gonna ask for it in '24?
Currently, that is a promise. How's that?
Go ahead, Bob.
The amount of funding that's coming from impact fees? Do you have that number?
I believe that the total amount we're requesting is coming from.
From impact fees? So are we expanding the fleet? How are we justifying that?
So it is, it is an expansion of the fleet to coincide with the approval of 10 new officers. It does also help with the, it does help with the fleet efficiency. It does also help with the, it does help with the fleet efficiency program as well.
Very good, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, Matt?
Just wanted, you guys have done a great job of forecasting and looking forward and getting this stuff done, so I appreciate that. The only thing that scares me is we have to put this in our replacement program now, too, so your budget every year from now on is going to.
Believe me, somebody already beat you to that. I think his name was Mr. Rains. We've had long discussions about this, where, I think we understand that as a department. Right now, the availability of these units is what pushes us to where we are today, because we have not been able to even locate Tahos, and here we have them on the parking lot. And we, we understand the future.
Oh, I, I understand. I know you will.
We knew that when we approved ten new officers.
But, you know, as our city grows, it's going to have to grow like that, so I appreciate you guys doing it. And you told me, Chief, about your first month, I think, here, about how you're going to do this fleet efficiency program, and how it was going to save us money, and it has. So I want to commend you for that, and your, and your department, and everybody for putting that together. So I think that they're taking a lot more pride in those cars now, and they're lasting us longer, and we finally switched to the Tahoe platform, which will last us longer, too. So I appreciate what you guys are doing, and I understand how hard it is to find those vehicles right now, so, good job.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, then I'll consider an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Ordinance number three-three-six-four. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Courtesy Chevrolet for the purchase of seven 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe police pursuit vehicles, accepting bids from various vendors for the installation of uplift equipment for those vehicles, authorizing expenditure of public funds, authorizing execution of contracts or purchase orders to complete the project, and authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number three-three-six-four as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, we'll move to item K, is K one?
Thank you, staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize the city manager to direct staff to work with the city's existing contracted engineering firms, as well as the real estate consultants to develop right-of-way easements and land needs as required. And this is to help support our efforts moving our CIP projects that are both wastewater system, collection system improvements, as well as roadway improvements that are needed in the industrial area. Primarily, we're focused on Henness, Quartzon, Bianco, Treacle, Peters Road, as well as CG Maricopa Highway. The authority requested is to provide the city manager to accept a donation of property or approve the purchase of property if adequate funds are available in the budget with the number of projects that we're currently working on. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, anyone? Okay, thank you, Kevin. All right, seeing no questions, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number three-three-six-five. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to acquire rights of way and public utility easements for the purpose of providing additional roadway and wastewater infrastructure facilities, and authorizing the execution of acquisition of documentation by the city manager.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number thirty-three-sixty-five as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, moving to item K two. This is considering, consider the appointment of Deiony Juarez as city judge for a two-year term, and set the compensation for her term. We had the opportunity to talk to Judge Juarez, and wanted to just publicly acknowledge her work over the last couple of years. We appreciate all that she's done, some of the changes she's implemented, and, and really kind of the camaraderie and collaboration that has been going on at the, over at the courthouse, and we appreciate the efforts there, so, thank you. So I would entertain a motion to approve. Did you want to say something?
I was just going to say, this is the, the recommended action is a culmination of the charter mandated process to select city judge for the, actually, the current two-year term, that term being co-terminous with that of the mayor. As explained previously this evening in special meeting, the process took place. The judicial selection committee met, considered the applications received, and according to its mandate, submitted two names for your consideration. One of those individuals subsequently withdrew, which brought to a place this evening where they come to Judge Juarez as the, the only candidate, and you interviewed her a little bit, a little bit earlier this evening. So your normally adopted process of selection makes no sense to really implement at this point in time. So the recommendation is that you do appoint Judge Deiony Juarez to, for the two-year term, which is co-terminous with that of the mayor, and you'll need to set the compensation this evening for the term.
Very good, thank you, Scott.
So Mayor McFarland, I move to appoint Judge Deiony Juarez to, for the two-year term, and place her at a pay grade of pay grade eighty-four, step one.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Very good. And Larry, you're going to have that discussion with the judge, okay? All right. All right. Next item really is reports, so I'm going to start over here with you, Mr. Edwards, and you can go first.
Well, I guess I'll start off by saying, I was invited to newly elected officials for the state of Arizona, and I did go to the seminar, and it was a great seminar that happened, I believe it was on the fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, that area. And it was very, very good and enlightening. Was able to meet a lot of other friends of mine that got elected throughout the state of Arizona, and also some of our neighboring, from Florence, which, those that got elected there, was able to sit with them and talk with them as well. And so I really enjoyed the time there, and learnt a lot in regards to what's ahead for Anthony. And also, thank you, Larry. I appreciate you all and your prayers in regards to my mother-in-law and being absent on the last meeting that we had. Thank you so much, the wife is back home, doing so much better, and so good to see you all in another new year. That's a blessing.
Very good, Donna?
Just one, I just want to, Judge O'Neil kind of stole my thunder. I wanted to recognize Chris O'Neil, who I have the pleasure of working with at our Penalt County Court, and he'll be leaving us for Court of Appeals, and we are proud of him, and we know that he served us well here at the city. Judge Gard from Penalt County was also chosen, so we're losing two judges in our, our county. So that tells a lot about the integrity of our judges here. And then also, I just wanted to thank Police and Fire. They were very busy in New Year's Eve weekend, and this, this building here was full of officers and firemen who enjoyed, you know, some time together, and, you know, went out. And I know that we had one officer that, that could have been injured, and we lost a Tahoe that night, but he is good, so I think that Mark probably could have asked for eight instead of seven. But anyway, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Donna, Matt?
Thanks. Couple events coming up this, on the fourteenth, which will be a week from Saturday, is the Chamber of Commerce Casa Grande Lifestyle Show, which used to be the Home Health and Garden Show, but has switched to Lifestyle Show. And the interesting thing is we've, there's been a bit of issue finding a permanent home, but they've partnered with the airport this year. So it's going to be at the airport in the, in the terminal, and a tent outside, too. And there's going to be car show, airplane show, artists, food trucks, beer garden, so. Kids' own, DJ, motorcycles. So it'll be a fun event, and it's free for anyone to attend, and that's at ten a.m. on the fourteenth of January. So that'll be exciting. And then the holiday season was great, it was great to see everybody with their houses decorated and, and having a good time. And so I'm just glad that everything went well, and thanks Councilwoman McBride and her husband, who cooked the barbecue for all the first responders on, on New Year's Eve here. And they do that, they've been doing that every year for a long time, so, thank them very much, and just Happy New Year to everyone. And it's going to be a good year.
Mr. Lavender?
Yeah, thank you, couple events coming up. Next, on Thursday, January twelfth, our Unity March is returning this year after a two-year absence due to COVID. The theme this year is the beloved community. The students will be marching from Lencola at twelve-thirty over here for a one o'clock rally. We have about a thousand students that will be attending. Mayor will be welcoming them, and then Councilmember Edwards will be talking about Dr. Martin Luther King's beloved community, and injustice for one is injustice for all. And then Pastor Juan Humes will also be speaking as well. So we want to invite the community to come out for that event. And also, on Monday, January fifteenth, a new unity committee.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, thank you.
Thank you, January sixteenth, a new unity committee is working on a day of service. It'll be starting at nine-thirty at Pert Park, our mayor will be welcoming there, as well as Councilmember Edwards, and also Representative and Majority Whip Teresa Martinez will be speaking. And we'll also be doing a unity prayer at the end of the event, before our members, our, our committee will go out and start doing some community service. We're looking at doing some alley cleanups, and we're projecting about three hundred people attending. Both Vista and Union will be supporting it. And also, then we're going to have hot dogs, chips, and soda pop in the park. And I also want to thank Chief Keen, he and I recently met to go over his staffing report. I had some questions in the middle of our meeting, when he got a call for a fire out at Lucid. I said, do you need to go? He says, no, but if you want to go for a ride. And so I got to go on a little field trip through town with the chief. But I think what was the most alarming, the pastor talked about today praying for a public service, is how many people ignored the lights and the siren. But this man is very cool when he drives, one hand, talking to me, never lost a beat as we were racing through traffic. I was white-knuckled, but, but thank you, chief. But the fire department, the professionalism out at Lucid was incredible. Real proud of our guys, and how they, guys and ladies, and how they dealt with it. And we hope to see you all at these important events, as we remember Dr. King's birthday.
Lisa?
You know, Jeff, I, I did want to thank you. I know this is something you've been doing over the years, for many years, and it's so nice to see it grow, and the passion, you know, from the community members that want to see it expand, so, thank you for that. But no, I'm glad to be back, I've been traveling the world the last two weeks over the holidays, something different for me. So I'll tell you, you know, we went through, my family, to Ireland, and France, and Switzerland, and the highlight of the trip, oh, well, I guess I'm exaggerating a little bit. The highlight of my trip was seeing these beautiful little bags in a town called Lucerd, Switzerland. And it was Casa Grande all over it. It was a gift shop that was called, it's actually Casa Grande. And these little bags, and there was a shop right in Lucerd, Switzerland, beautiful town in the Alps, beautiful. And this little shop is in there, these little bags are all over. And so, of course, I go in the shop, get a picture with the Casa Grande, and I want to know where it came, you know, the name came from. And they actually said that it was an Italian family that came over to Switzerland and opened this gift shop, and, and so we're like.
Does it mean big house and Italian?
Yeah, well, I know, right? Yeah, it does, actually. But, but it was funny, because we, when we asked, you know, where did the name come from? And he said, it was a family, and he goes, but I know, there's a town right between Phoenix and Tucson, I swear. Like, literally, my husband and I both just gasped when he, they said, I know, there's a town between Phoenix and Tucson called Casa Grande. And we were just like, oh, my God, that's where we're from. And so, but it was so cute, and of course, when I posted something on Facebook, several people said, oh, I was there. I went to that store, I know exactly where it is. So all of you that went to this store, this man knew where the city of Casa Grande was, and so it was just really cute, so. But it was, it was definitely one of the highlights of the trip. But no, glad to be back, Happy New Year, and look forward to a great year.
Bob?
Yes, sir, with all the rain last week, pat on the back to Public Works and the Street Department. We did have some local street flooding, and caution lights went up rather quickly, and there were some potholes that developed. I even saw some mention of it on social media, but when I made the rounds today, they're all patched up and smooth as can be. That's all.
Great, thank you, Bob. Hey, Happy New Year to everybody, and I do have some not-so-good news in terms of the I-ten widening. I was, I got a call from the Senator Kelly's office today that they did not approve our mega grant. So the three hundred and sixty million we had asked for in the mega grant, and we had the four hundred matching, was not approved, but not to be deterred. We will go after it again this next year, it's a five-year grant process, meaning every year they give some money out. And we'll learn from what we requested before, and we're also going to go back to the legislature and see if we can't get that similar amount from the legislature, and, and maybe we'll just pay for it. The state can pay for it by itself. And then eventually, hopefully, get some additional grants down the road. But we did get that news today, so I wanted to let you all know, keep you up to speed on the I-ten widening process. Doesn't mean it's not going to go forward, just means we need a little more money, we've got to go out and find some more money. Also, to remind everybody, the legislature starts, actually, the inauguration, they already were sworn in yesterday, but the public inauguration is, is Thursday, and then on Monday, the actual legislature starts. So the season will begin here soon, and just to give you an idea, there will be a tremendous amount of change this year. We have a number of new lawmakers and, and leadership as well in the legislature. Both the House and the Senate will see over fifty percent of their members change, which is huge. And, but despite that changeover, there's still, the partisan split remains identical. So the last legislature, the Republicans maintained a thirty-one-twenty-nine and a sixteen-fourteen. So thirty-one-twenty-nine in the House, and a sixteen-fourteen advantage in the Senate. That being said, we have a, we will have a, we have a Democratic, or Democrat governor, so that's, that's a change. Hasn't been that way with the Republican majority and, and a Democrat as the, as the head of the state since two thousand nine. So this should be an interesting year to see what happens. The Senate Majority President is Warren Peterson. Interestingly, this year, we have, we have one of our House representatives, Teresa Martinez, is actually in the leadership. She's in the House leadership as the House Majority Whip. So I don't think we've had that in a while, so that's, it's going to be interesting to see what we do. I know Senator Shope is also in leadership position in the Senate, and Neil Carter's in a, in a, as a chair of the, some of the committees. And so, and then even a, a, a House Representative Cook is also in a, in a leadership position among the chairs. So we have a lot of, of our representatives that are in leadership position, so it should be interesting to see what happens. We will be working with all of them to try and get additional dollars for that I-ten widening. So the fight isn't over, and we'll continue the good fight. Again, Happy New Year to everybody, and, do you have anything else you want to add? Okay, then I'll adjourn tonight's meeting, and thank you all for coming tonight. Okay, then I'll adjourn tonight's meeting, and thank you all for coming tonight.